Good evening to the Brookfield Selectments Meeting of Tuesday, October 22, 2019. Would you like to rise and join me in the floor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, would like everybody to remain standing, please. I'd like to have a moment of silence for William Pratt, who died last, he passed away last week. He was the Cemetery Commissioner here in town, and Bill was a very humble man, and he did a lot of things for the town of Brookfield. And I just found out recently that he was the one that did all the brickwork on the gazebo for us. And then he was also a Vietnam Veteran who was, who got the highest value Medal of Valor from the Air Force. So, he never let anybody know this, I had just found this out over the weekend from his daughter. So, we'll have a moment of silence for him and his family. Okay. I would like a motion to ratify them. Payroll warrant for 9/25/19 for $1,425.68. 10/8/19 for $168,611.75. 10/1/19 for $174,922.70. 10/22/19 for $119,056.88. 10/23/19 for $167,935.58.
Do you have that motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we have to, I would like to have a motion to acknowledge minutes from committees and departments, from the CIPC minutes from September 10, 2019, and Conservation Commission minutes from September 17, 2019.
Do you have a motion to acknowledge?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Here we have announcements. A heads up that a parking ban will be in effect from November 15 through April 1, from the hours of 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. There shall be no parking on any streets. Also, snow or ice removal from driveways, sidewalks, or private property shall not be plowed, shoveled, or blown across any public way, street, or roadway. Trick or treat in the common and village areas would be held from 6:00 to 7:30 on Thursday, October 31, immediately followed by a parade from the fire department to the town common. A costume contest will follow. Does anyone else have any announcements this evening?
No.
No?
Got something on the other, but just briefly.
Okay, alrighty. The first one we have here is, it's our first right of refusal, but it was, it was something that was sent to, to us, and then Karen had given it over to the assessor, and what it was, was somebody was buying some property, and the lawyer was, a lawyer from Boston, the lawyer thought that we had to, that the assortment had the first right of refusal because it was under Chapter 61.
So why don't I just motion to pass over? Motion to pass over.
Yeah, motion to pass over. Because what, all that they have to do is just, you know, refile it in their name because they're not taking it out of.
Oh, they're not taking it out of.
No, they're not taking it out.
Oh, okay.
And so the realtor was confused because she hadn't really dealt with anything like this before.
Yes, I'll second that.
Yeah, we'll pass that over.
We need to vote to pass over.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, this one is, then we have some CMRPC invoices, and this one, the invoice will be paid for the Brookfield 2017 Community Block Grant for 15 post-rod.
Motion to sign the invoice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the total due on this was $1,700.
And while we do that, Hayden and Hyde looks great.
I was gonna say, I went just by over the weekend, it was coming along well.
Oh, this is, now this is 15 post-rod though.
Oh, different one.
And then we also have one from, this is the one for Hayden and Hyde, and we paid from Brookfield's 2018 Community Block Grant, and a motion to sign this.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the total for this was $4,543.48. And then there's another one from Hayden and Hyde, and this will also come out of the Brookfield Community Block Grant, and this one is for $4,875 also.
That was for the paving. Paving.
Paving?
Yep.
A motion to sign this?
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, this is another one. Yeah. Okay, and this is from the CMRPC, it was management invoices number 7, 8, and 21. And a motion to sign these.
Motion to sign the CMRPC invoices.
All in favor?
Aye.
My fingers in the place. Alright. There you go.
Yep, thanks.
Have these been signed? Oh, no, no, this one says change order for Hayden and Hyde?
Change order, yeah, change orders, yeah, that's number three.
Is that in this, is that in this form?
I think we signed all of those.
No, we signed them all, yeah.
Yep, not, it's not in that pile, it's separate. Then we have P O P and the change order together, yep.
Oh, all there together?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Okay, and this is a, this is a change order from, what, it was a change in the contract, I guess for the, for the costs, the original contract cost was $384,373.2 in the completion by October 31st, 200, thank you, Don, 2019. And it was just a few changes here on the cost.
And it's still covered by the.
Yeah, it's still covered all by the grant, and these require just the chairman's signature, I'd like the.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
these all get paid also by the, by the block grant. I'd like a motion to sign.
Yeah, motion to sign.
There's three diff, there's three different bills here that need to be signed.
I screwed it.
Yep. That was a case of having the headspace to do this, because they've got such a good quote on the original work, that was an excellent outcome.
Yes.
I hope maybe when the time comes, if we get Chapter 90 money for next year, we can get them to do Central Street.
That's the plan. Ryan wants to come to chat with us at some point on the plan for next year. We have money in Chapter 90, just have a spot, spend it.
The next one on here is a retirement. Okay. Dear Select Board Members, I am retiring from the Town of Leicester, effective October 31st, 2019. Due to the retirement laws and being a member of Worcester County Retirement System, I must resign my position as Inspector of Building in both towns I am currently employed with, effective November 1st, 2019. The law states I must resign my position for a period, resign, for my position for a period of two weeks, as I discussed. I will be back to work November 18th, 2019. John Zacharitz will be covering for inspections and calling this time. If there are any questions, I can be reached at 508-867-8342 anytime. Jeffrey Taylor, CBO, Inspector of Buildings. And he said that he can be appointed again on the agenda of 10/11/5.
Yep. So, motion to accept the retirement as stated?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have some wage authorizations, and we can probably vote them all in one time. We have a one for Maureen Morano, for Conservation Clerk, for $12. We have one for, from the Water Department, for Joe Kenny, he's a secondary operator, for $26. Then we have one from the Planning Board, for Christine Weissman, and hers is for $15 an hour. And then we have one also here, from the Fire Department, for Thomas Allen, and that's for $1,261. And then there's also another one here for Maureen Morano, she is going to be a municipal clerk for the tax collector, and that's $14 an hour. And then, another one for the Water Department, for Jeff Buchanan, he'll be another secondary operator for $26.
Good that we're finding secondary operators. We've historically struggled to find secondary operators, that's good that we're finding them.
And this is another one, secondary will be Bruce Clark, and that will be $26 an hour.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I already did this one, so if you want to take this one. Now we have some special permits here to use the lakes, and I'd like to probably take a motion to sign all of these at one time.
Motion to sign them all.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this one is for 4/26/2020, South Pond, everybody on South Pond. And this is for 4/26/2020 on Quaybog, and the requesting group is the Ice Hole. And this is for 5/2/2020, at Quaybog Pond, is the Shootout Series Bass Trail. 5/9/2020, Quaybog Pond, for the Pioneer Valley Bass Anglers. And 6/13/2020 for Quaybog Pond, the Mass Bass Nation. 6/20/2020, Quaybog Pond, Yusa Basin. And another one, 8/22/2020 on Quaybog Pond, for Blackstone Valley Bass Anglers. 6/14/2020, South Pond, Brookfield, for the Chickapee Bass Association. 7/12/2020, Quaybog Pond, for the Coventry Bass Anglers. 7/8/2020, South Pond, for Aluminum Boat Fishing Series. And 8/16/2020, Quaybog Pond, for the Nesbun Western Mass Kayak Team Trials. And 8/29/2020, Quaybog Pond, for the Blackstone Valley Bass Masters.
I'm surprised we have any fish left in those bodies.
Now, these are some, these are some appointments that we have. Okay, Dear Honorable Board of Selectmen, please consider this request to be appointed to the Cemetery Commission to fill the remaining term of William Pratt, who passed away recently. Bill was a very close friend of mine, and I feel he would be pleased if I completed his term. Thank you for your consideration, Gary Lincoln.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we, now we have another appointment for Cemetery Commission because, with the passing of Ed Foley, and this is for Arthur Jay.
Motion to appoint.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we have two for the Cultural Council, which we're probably doing together. It's for Jessica Clark and Nick Clark, had appointment to be, a motion?
Motion to appoint.
Cultural Council. A second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Cultural Council, because I know they're only served for so many years. I said whose spots are they taking on Cultural? Because I know the Cultural Council, they can only serve for so many years.
Yeah, and I don't, I think they've had empty seats on Cultural Council for a while, so.
True.
And now this is to sign the Mass Cultural Council Allocation Contract for FY20. Yeah, but we do this every year, and the amount of the contract is $5,400, and I would like a motion.
Motion to sign it.
To sign that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
After the meeting, I'll finish it because I have to write, print my name and the whole works on this. I'm gonna keep that one out so I can sign afterwards. Okay, the next one is to sign off Chapter 90 funds for Mass Dot. This is the reimbursement from Mass Dot, and it's for $183,948.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this one is to vote to approve the P A R C grant.
So this comes about from open space, and we were, it was suggested to us that we should put forward a grant application for a project to solidify the open space work. What this does is, this allows us, or what we've been granted is $115,000, I'm sorry, $119,633.5 to take and make our playground ADA compliant and new, and with this, the reimbursement is, if it's right here, but it's like 85%.
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three thousand, seven forty-three. What Kathy has done is to work with the grant administrators to allow us to move to vote this at the annual town meeting in the spring. So what, what they're asking us to do tonight is to say that we would want to move this thing forward to the annual town meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to sign this grant.
Then you have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kathy's done a lot of good work.
So she managed to coordinate with them to.
Yeah, she was able to do that.
Push it to.
Yeah.
Move it to the spring.
Yep.
Great.
Yep. And a new playground in the next fiscal year.
That's great.
A positive vote. To be just a single signature. This is the important document.
Right, and that in essence says in good faith we'll put it on the next town meeting more, in order to properly fund it, so. I'm sure we've got a question in the audience.
Mr. Cleveland, yes?
From Chapter 90, is this gonna be the last payment on the mortgage that I have on? Like sixty-three thousand less?
We didn't, that's, none of these have anything to do with this.
No, we weren't allocating any money, we were accepting it from the state.
Oh, sorry.
And this was for the playground equipment that's for ADA.
Yeah, I think he was back about, and that's, that was Hayden and Hyde, Hayden and Hyde work.
Yeah, we're just acknowledging receipt of the notice of what we had for Chapter 90.
Well, I want to congratulate Kathy for all the hard work that she's done on these grants.
Yeah, between she and Ian.
I understand that because that was a major consideration for trying to get them before we started the hearing.
She did a negotiation.
Yeah.
Nice job.
All right, anything under other, you have something?
I have something under other, so last Thursday evening, we met with CMRPC on senior housing needs within, within the Brookfield, Brookfields, and I had provided some information, and I think I've shared it with you as far as the growth in the over 65 population within the town, and where we have a number of elderly living alone, and how do we solve these housing kinds of issues. If anything, CMRPC's data, and they'll finish up their work by December as far as the demographics, but our demographics are the region's demographics, and we do in fact have, have a. What came out of the meeting was, was kind of interesting, and it's the use of accessory housing is probably the quickest and fastest and most economic way to achieve elderly housing. Again, Sharon, do you want to share with you what you've just received in the mail?
What is accessory housing?
An in-law.
Oh, in-law. Oh, okay.
So the number, the number one way to get quick housing would be to, in fact, to reconstruct existing buildings. And Sharon received something in the mail today, and it's just right down this alley.
Mr. Snyder has shared with me the, the summary of the meeting that he went to, and I gave him the information from the current zoning bylaws about accessory apartments, and the accessory apartment bylaw is rather sparse. Mr. Snyder has shared with me a prototype based on West Brookfield's accessory apartment, which is more comprehensive, more specific, and I think would be a good way to build on perhaps a modified. which is more comprehensive, more specific, and I think would be a good way to build on perhaps a modified bylaw for Brookfield, which would help to not only work toward the goal he has mentioned, but also to kind of make a little more specific and a little more, a little less ambiguous, the accessory housing bylaw we have now. Additionally, we also have a bylaw in the Use Regulation Table for converting a one-family house to a two, three, or four-family house. And I've discovered there's some confusion between the definition of an accessory apartment and a modified one-family into a multifamily. So we could effectively, working with the information Mr. Snyder has given, Mr. Snyder himself, if he's willing to work with the planning board, to improve what we have now for bylaws that would not only make it clearer to any potential applicant what the town expects of them, but also make it easier for them to convert properties so that elderly family members can continue to live with their families should the house in question be suitable for conversion to an accessory apartment. In addition, I just received in the mail today in our mailbox, a notice from the Community Economic Development Assistance Corporation. It's from Susan Gillum, the project manager, and the program in question is the Home Modification Loan Program. This will be posted out in the hallway here at the Town Hall, but let me see if I can summarize it quickly. It's a program that's been in existence since two thousand. It's a loan program that will enable households to fund projects like accessory units, home security features, fencing ramps, wheelchair and stair lifts, so it will, it will address the ADA compliance for these units. Widen doorways, bathroom and kitchen modifications and more. And the loans that are offered are up to fifty thousand dollars depending on household income. There's also, there's, there are no monthly payments, repayment of the loan required only when the property is sold or when the property's title or deed is changed. And HMLP also offers loans up to thirty thousand to owners of manufactured or mobile homes, which is important because manufactured and mobile homes are effectively the only affordable housing we currently have here in Brookfield. And this would be a big boon to the people living in those units. Landlords with identified tenants needing accessible adaptations and who have buildings with fewer than ten units can also qualify for a three percent loan. So this will be posted in the hallway here at Town Hall. There is a handy coupon you can tear off and send in to ask for more information. There is also a number you can call, and there is a website listed on this paper. So lots of information coming in, lots of projects in the works, I guess. And if there's anything you need me to add from a planning board standpoint, I'd be happy to do that.
No, I think what we learned is this is the first and fastest way to do, to improve housing inventory. The second is in the area of the mobile homes and the mobile home parks, there may be some regulations that need to be improved to in fact foster that kind of living. And then the last area is to find someone who would actually want to develop some housing. And again, we'll, we'll continue down the path to understand what we can do.
And if I can briefly go over the process, if Planning Board decides to go ahead with this, and I am going to propose it at our November meeting, we would follow the same process we did for solar and marijuana bylaws. We would, we would write some drafts and go over them and solicit public opinion and hold the required public hearing and probably listening sessions. And we would make an effort to invite the elderly in this community, because they would be the ones who would benefit most from this, I would think. And then any bylaw we develop, provided that we can come up with something in time, would be proposed at the next annual town meeting for a vote.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you for all the work you've done, and thank you, Sharon.
Could we also get that website posted either off the main page for the town or perhaps off the Planning Board page for that loan program?
Don, were you here for something this evening?
Yes, thank you. I had requested to be on the agenda to talk about the Town Hall Improvement Committee. And we would, we felt that we had made some pretty significant contributions to the Town Hall. And we thought it might be appropriate to have a little open house. So we were thinking about Thursday, November seventh. And what we would do is just have pizza and soda, and it would be from twelve to one. And everybody would be welcome. The problem is without Appleseed and their publication, although it would be too, too short of notice. I don't know how to get the word out. I don't know if we can put it on the website.
Well, November seventh, we could probably still get it in the Quaybog-
Quaybog.
Quaybog and Spencer New Leader. We could do a little press release.
We could probably even put something in the New Leader, because I don't, their deadlines are on Monday.
Yeah, so we could, we could get it in. If we go, if we sent it into them this week, it could probably be in both of them. We could do just a little, like, you know, little fifty to two-hundred word write-up as like a little press release.
Okay.
But Lindsay would probably put it on the community Facebook. Brian would show, put it on the Brookfield Town Facebook.
Okay. Can somebody do that? I don't-
I can, I can ask, I can reach out to either of them, both of them.
Great, that'd be awesome. So it'll be in this room from twelve to one or thereabouts.
And just to prove-
I need some more details.
Okay, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Okay, or you can email them.
That's right, we have a newspaper person right here that could write up a nice little article.
Yeah, I can do a bunch of, I'll send it to my editor friends. We'll see if they remember names, if we go put it in.
Well, I know that Eileen wants stuff from us.
Yeah, she does.
Awesome, yeah, okay.
I have to say the improvement so far, it really looks nice.
Well, you know, when you think about, I mean, we've troubleshoot the heating system. We've troubleshoot some plumbing issues, we've moved a couple of offices, we've created a couple of new facilities. And we're still working on the chairlift. And so we felt that we've made some pretty significant improvements, and we just thought it might be appropriate to-
Share it with the community.
Yes.
And then next door, Mike has, they've taken down all the wallpaper next door. And they're going to get it ready, and I guess we're gonna have the prisoners from the jail come up. And they're, and they're gonna paint, and then I think-
I know he was concerned about the wallpaper and some environmental issues.
Yeah, something came in, I guess, from, from Boston about different issues, like they really take the rugs up off the floor too, because they said that can be causing some mold and mildew down there. So I don't know how, if we could just paint, have to see the condition of the floors, if it can be painted or if it has to be refinished. But that's gonna look nice too, also when it's finished.
Okay, I just wanted to run that by you and ask for permission and-
That's a good question from a timing perspective. I mean, twelve to one is good for folks perhaps that are in town at that time. Would it be worth doing a Wednesday evening sometime when the Town Hall's already open?
We could, we could do that, possibly.
What, run another session, you said?
Well, I mean, I know it sounds silly, but a lot of folks aren't in town during the day, quite frankly. So just, it would seem like if you really wanted to kind of get, get the community in, it might be good to try it for the evening.
Sure, I think that would be, that would be something that would be doable. If you have a date in mind?
November fifth.
Or the sixth, actually, would be the Wednesday before the-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so maybe the thirteenth, so the thirteenth would be the-
So what, you'd want to do a second night?
Or do, or do it in the evening?
Or do it in an evening.
Oh, instead of doing it during the day?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, that would be my recommendation, just because I know it's, it's hard for some folks to come during, during the daytime hours.
I would do it relatively early.
Right, like six.
Six, six.
Six o'clock or five to seven or something like that.
Yeah, exactly.
Five to, yeah, something like that.
Yeah, just so that when people are looking back in town, they can make-
That would be the thirteenth?
Yeah, that would be the, the, you'd check and see if there's any other board meetings on Wednesday.
Why would we do it?
Because the first, the first Wednesday is-
No, this Thursday, November seventh, why wouldn't we do it the same day?
Oh, you could do it the evening?
In the evening.
Sure, I was just thinking the Town Hall's already open on Wednesdays, but, you know, actually Thursday would be fine. And actually, then you're not interrupting with people actually doing town business, so it's probably better to do it on that Thursday.
All right, so we'll do the same date, the seventh.
Five, five to seven?
Five to seven.
That'd be great.
Good, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You can just send me an email, okay, Don?
Yes.
Unless we have, we have anybody else under other with something short? Mr. Gillis, would you like to come up?
Um, yeah. As you know, advisors can be with the town accountant on a monthly basis. Just wanted to review a couple of the updates that we've had, and just gonna tear it over to Tom.
Well, we're not gonna get into this too deep, because we're having the Executive Board, and we're, we're meeting next, the fifth of November. We're meeting with the town accountant, she's coming in and giving us a report on the finances. And then afterwards, there's an Executive Board session. So we're not getting into this whole deep on all of this, there's no long discussion. I just want it short and simple.
Well, we have all the fronts here. We have some concerns about the schedule and of the town meeting nature, limits to the state and to the-
Tom, could you come up?
Tom, would you come up?
I'd love to, camera time.
Yeah. Specifically, we just want to express some concern over the town making certain important deadlines. We're thinking of specifically, we are far behind on the Schedule A for fiscal year twenty eighteen.
I can answer that for you afterwards.
I'm sorry?
I can answer that for you when you're finished.
Okay. We are also concerned about making sure that the sched, that the tax recapitulation is able to be done on time. And then following on from that, obviously, the fiscal year nineteen Schedule A will have to be done, less important than the others. And from our conversation with members of the financial team, we are concerned that these may not be done on time. And specifically, the question I have to ask, I have for you is, what are our target dates for getting these done?
Well-
Well, I, I, again, we have a meeting established for November fifth-
On the fifth, yeah.
That, with Lori and representatives of the Treasury. And the idea was, and what we were given to believe, was that November fifth was an appropriate date to begin the discussion as to the deliverables, and that certain deliverables would be done by the November fifth date. And then following on with that, the nineteen stuff was to be done by the end of December. And then we were looking at an audit early in next year, in twenty twenty. And so again, what we looked to, to the, this November fifth meeting was to in fact have both accounting and Treasury here to say that those, those milestones and the sub-milestones within them can be met. If they can't be met, then we need to know.
And then I would like, I talked to the town accountant this morning about some of these dates. And she said that her boss, Eric Kershif, is he's in, he's in constant contact with Mary Jane Handy, who is the Director of the Department of Revenue. And she knows that Brookfield is behind, and she said when things come in, they come in. So she's fully aware of this.
I am concerned that you cannot tell me what the target date for getting those things done is. I understand, yeah, we're gonna talk about, we're gonna have all the people in and we're gonna have a discussion of schedule on November fifth. Why don't we have a target date now?
Because, because our commitment was November fifth, Tom.
November fifth.
I'm sorry, let's, let's back up. We are managing the finances, oh, I'm sorry. You are in charge of managing the finances of the town through the professional staff. And I understand, so to me, November fifth is a, well, let's check on where we are on our progress, and I'll be making our targets. What I'm hearing now is, I'm hearing, we don't have a target date. That's what's-
That's untrue.
I'm not hearing, you're not telling me what it is, and that's what I'm trying to ask about.
So the last meeting that we had about this, when we had the accountant in here, actually, the twenty eighteen goal that had been set at that point was the, was end of month October.
I'm pretty sure that it's, it's close to being closed.
Well, yeah, I think there's been some concerns expressed as to whether we'll make that target or not. But the target for twenty eighteen was the end of month October.
But see, we don't have-
And that is for the Schedule A to be submitted?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
And she, it was originally to be like the twenty-first to twenty-eighth, and she asked to move to November fifth. We, we accepted the last meeting that November fifth date.
And they have me getting extensions, like I tried to tell you from the Department of Revenue, the Director in Boston. And she's well aware of all the problems that we've had here in Brookfield.
I, I understand we're getting extensions, and I'm glad we are. But as I understand it, we are subject to, not the whims, but we are dependent on the good graces and demonstrating continued support to the state DOR in order to maintain, to keep ourselves in those good graces while we get our fiscal year twenty eighteen Schedule A submitted. And so, and that is to me a big risk, and that we should, I'm, I just don't get the warm fuzzy that we are managing this as well as we should be to get this done on time and get it behind us to work on climbing out of this hole that we find ourselves in. And I'm not going, and I do not want to get into how we found ourselves in the hole, I want to focus on getting out.
This is what we're working on.
And again, you've been meeting with the accountant, she's shared with you her position on different things. We think that she's moving in a constructive way, the feedback to the chairman is that in fact she's moving in a constructive way. And I don't think it's appropriate this evening, without her present, that we discuss it.
You feel it's not appropriate?
No, it's not.
I'm not, I'm not asking to discuss the accountant's performance, I'm not asking to discuss anyone's performance. I'm asking to, I'm asking to understand the project plan. That's what I, that's what I am focused on.
And she, and she shared that, and she should be here tonight to speak on it, but she's not here, she will be here on the fifth. That's, that was the target date.
You're concerned, we get it.
We get it, we understand.
And you don't think you're the only one.
Yeah, and I, I think one, one thing I'm, I'm hearing from you in this is that we verbally went over the milestones when the accountant was here the last time. So she talked about some of the discrepancies that they had identified in Gateway, that they needed to validate their, the, the way that the withholdings were, were getting managed. That the, from an accounting perspective, not from an actual funds perspective. But that was where very specifically that we had said that the twenty eighteen, the expectation was that that get filed by end of month October. I think part of the concern maybe is that we, we don't have, there's a feeling that there's not enough visibility on, on how we stand to actually achieving that goal. Because it, it sounds like the message that's getting sent during the weekly meetings between the accountant and advisory doesn't give them a comfort level that that end of month October goal is going to get met. So I think that's something that we need to understand, is if there is a gap, how, how big the gap is.
And again, if we have to share that, we share that with you, that you're, you're representing this board.
I am up here, I'm sorry.
If the accountant is in a position, or the treasurer is in a position to say that there are things that are unmet goals that if we need to take a further action, that it needs to come before this board.
I am up here every day, Steve, checking on things, with, with all the departments on how this is going. And I know that there was, the town accountant, I don't know if she told you, there was problems back even from fiscal sixteen and fiscal seventeen that she had to correct before she could even go further.
I've, I've heard of the fiscal year seventeen problem.
It's sixteen and seventeen.
Okay, I hadn't heard about sixteen.
Yeah, there were the problems.
I actually went back and listened to the town meeting from the special in sixteen and sent her some notes about, because there was some entries that they weren't quite sure about, and I sent her some notes about the sixteen.
Oh, the special from sixteen? Yeah, I did hear about that.
Yeah, there was a lot of different, so there, so you know, I'm up here, I'm checking with them and asking them all how they're progressing. And there's nothing else we can really do. I mean, and we have to wait till Lori is here with us next, next two weeks on the fifth, and she will tell us.
Or if there's something in the meantime.
In the meantime, and also I have told the Treasury Department, if they need more help to get this done, we'll get them more help. And they have said, no, they're, they're doing fine themselves.
And so the Treasury, you represent to us that the Treasury, that you are confident the Treasury Department is going to make its time and that we are going to have our-
I can't say I'm confident that they will, but they're, they're trying, they're working on it, because every day they're finding something different over there that has to be corrected. be corrected.
Okay.
Because it's, it's a lot of work that has not been done over in that Treasury Department.
Is it, is it worth seeing what type of third-party resources are available to help them out?
I, it would be worth it. I could talk to them and see if they would want us to get a third party in, but the third party would have to work out in another room.
Cart before the horse.
Yeah.
You have to know what the problem is...
Yeah, we have to know what the problems are.
I mean, picking up the phone and saying, hey, can you help me, is one thing. Picking up the phone and saying, I need these, several things done, are you, do you have those resources?
Yeah.
And again, I look to them to come to this body to say, we're okay, or we're not okay, knowing that we have certain deadlines that we are supposed to be meeting.
Yeah, because I...
And, and we're, we're gonna have an audit early next year.
Yes.
And we're gonna know how bad bad is, because this isn't, we're, we're not even close to really understanding the, the whole problem.
Oh, no, the, I mean, the sched, the Schedule As is, is like knocking back the fire.
It's the tip of the iceberg.
Yeah, it's, it's not the end, it's the, it's the...
The beginning of the end.
Yeah, it's...
And yesterday, um, I think it was yesterday, over in the department, in the Treasurer's department, um, they told me today, there was an attorney that had called them on something, um, some kind of a check that he had, had come in, I guess, quite a few years ago, and the check was never posted on some property that wasn't paid, and he said if it was not found that day, he was suing the town of Brookfield. So, she had to take the time out from her regular work, and she had to look for this, because that was a priority that day.
Mm-hmm.
So, see, things come up that happen like this.
I, I, I understand that.
You never, you never know what's happening, because there's such, there's been such a big turnover in that Treasury Department, that a lot of the work hadn't been done.
Yeah. One of the specific questions that we may want to ask, because the notes I have from the last meeting related to this, is that we may want to find out if they want help getting the 2019 revenues posted, because I think there's so much work occurring in order to get 2018 settled and, and balancing the books from 2019, that, um, I, I know one of the things that was specifically called out in the last meeting was the revenue posting.
Yeah, if it's someone that can be...
And that might be something that, that might be something that could be set aside from the rest of it, just to make certain that we're not getting any farther behind in 2020.
And then they're also doing, they're also doing the best they can, try to keep up with posting from FY 20 also.
For 2020, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So...
So we've got three people in that, in that Treasurer's office, working on clearing, on taking care of the 18 and 19, so that...
Two working on those.
Okay.
The, the other, the assistant treasurer does the payroll. She takes care of the payroll, the deductions, and the insurances.
Mm-hmm.
That's what her position, that's what she does.
Okay.
So we have the treasurer and her consultant, who is helping her, they're the ones that are working on, uh, they finished, they finished FY 18, and there are a few more things that they need, the town accountant said, and now, they started, I think, today on 19. And then they're also, like I said, they're trying to keep up with FY 20 also.
So if the assistant treasurer had to go downstairs and look for that check downstairs...
No, no, it wasn't the assistant treasurer, it was the treasurer herself, because, see, the assistant treasurer only works up here a couple of days during the week, because she also works at two other departments.
Okay, so the assistant treasurer wasn't in that day?
No, she wasn't in that day.
Okay.
So, again, I think we, we need to move this discussion to November 5th, or unless, Linda, there's something that comes up.
No, yes, yeah, and unless something else comes up, I'll let everybody know what's going on. I'll have Karen will send an email out to everyone, and let, if another problems comes up, we'll, we'll let you know, keep you informed.
I will request that if you receive, if, uh, information comes up indicative of schedule slip and things not being done, for example, the fiscal year 18 Schedule A not being submitted by the end of the month, as we discussed, if you could, uh, please have Karen inform the Advisory Board of that and keep us informed.
Yes, I just said that I would.
Oh. I apologize for missing that.
So I think this ends this discussion. Thank you for coming forward, because the rest of it, we'll talk about it on the 5th.
You're welcome, it was lovely to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next one, we'll go on to correspondence. Okay, we have, um, a memo here from Deb Boyd from Tantascra Regional, she's, um, would like to have, this is on the FY 21 school budget liaisons. They would like, um, a member of the Board of Selectmen and a member of the Finance or Advisory Committee to be liaisons to both of the schools. And they're having, uh, they start in Ja, in January, and she has a schedule here of all the meetings. I've done the elementary school for two years, so I don't know if either one of you would...
I could probably do the elementary school.
Yeah, and then we need somebody from, uh, the Advisory Board to do the, to do Tantascra.
Yes.
Yes, Steve?
What was the question?
We need, Deb Boyd sent us a memo saying that she needs some school budget liaisons.
Oh, we've got Beth, Crystal LeBron, and Tony Ollin.
All right.
No, we need one, she needs one, and we have, and Beth said she'd do the elementary school.
Well, I mean, if, if somebody from the Advisory wants to, um, participate on, as well, that's fine.
What?
I mean, if they want, if they wanted, if they want to attend the elementary as well, I can, I don't, I can share, so that way they can get the information directly.
Yeah, if you and one of the advisor, and then we also need somebody for Tantascra. And I have a whole schedule, and if who's ever interested, we can, I'll have Karen make copies of the schedule, and you can have them. We need, we need to know.
We've invited, um, Deb Boyd and, um, to our committee meeting on November 14th, because it's such a high priority, and so we, we've been meeting with committees already, with departments already.
Okay, so maybe you could tell her at that time who your liaison would be?
Correct.
And then we'll say that Beth is liaison for the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
All right, Karen?
That'll work. Yeah, I just need to schedule the, the meetings.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make you a copy.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on.
Moving on. Uh, this is from Charter Communications. Spectrum TV Silver will increase price from five, uh, five dollars, it's going up to 97.49. Spectrum TV Gold is going five, is going up at five dollars, and that will be 117.49. Another one from Charter, on November 15th, 2019, they'll launch a new channel called Black News Channel HD on SPP Tier 1. That's Charter. And then our next one here is, um, is called a Notice of Release of Abatement Measure RAM for 14 post-roe, and that came from CMG. It was, um, they did a search for the waste site, and this was on the 10 o'clock.
Oh, yes, all right.
Do you want to see it?
Actually, I do.
I would like to see that.
Good. Just gonna do the work. Then we'll get a report and figure out what we can do.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Cleveland?
I spent two hours on Hamline Road, the highway crew thing. I hope we have enough money to take a load of trees down, but if we run out of money, are we just gonna stop taking trees down, or do we have to have a special town meeting to bring money in for trees?
Well...
After watching a tree fall down...
Well, we don't know what our financial situation is, and we'd have to see if the, what money, if the, uh, if the highway department had extra money in one of their accounts to be able to take these trees down.